Okay, I'll call and read the order then. Six o'clock. We'll meet in Executive Session, May 2015. Would you please release?
Hallelitians, due to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is everybody? We have a forum, thankfully. Mr. Baker may be here. Mr. Wilkinson is unavailable. Let's see. We have a critical motion approved the minutes of April the 28th, 2015.
Amen.
Tara make the motion. Second? I'll say. Mr. Curry. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Yes. All of us. I will hold on just a second before I make my next statement. You're okay.
There's a white card over there.
I have a problem with that.
Yes. For S E T I training. Does that sound right? Is this the special education technology?
Okay, we're... We're ready. Now, we're not going to take any public comments, Miss Nikki. If we have anybody sign in this evening? Okay. We have Tara Hager. She wants to talk about a bus issue. Miss Hager. You're okay. Just come right up here. If you want to sit down, you're more welcome to do that. Mr. Baker?
Please, please. Yes, ma'am. Now, just please understand that since you are not on the agenda and have just signed in, that we really can't...
I understand.
...have a dialogue with you. And also caution you, if you want to talk about individuals that would not be appropriate to talk about in the public, if you're talking about the individual personnel, because you might say something that could be considered libelous or whatever. So oftentimes, we would suggest if you want to talk about those kind of things, that they be done in Executive Session. But I don't, you know, I have no idea about it. It's one of those two things, but once again, since you are...
See, I'm not sure what I can and cannot say, so...
Well, that's what I mean. You know, I'm just trying to read between the lines. You say it's a bus issue, and typically that's, you know, there's been some disagreement with maybe one of our employees. If that's the case, and right now, I'm just trying to explain this to them. Once again, we can't really get into it. So we haven't delved into the issue yet. I'm just telling you the overall way it works. But at this point, we can't really, you know, if you were to ask us to talk, as even we are in Executive Session, we can't really communicate back and forth with you. At this point, I'm assuming that you've already met with the person involved, their supervisor, and possibly someone at the central office here before you've come to the board.
Mm-hmm.
And follow that agenda, ma'am. Okay, so you go, and then...
If she intends to address an individual, will we go into Executive Session and listen, then?
We can, but we can't respond. If that would be the board's choice.
Okay. I have an issue that occurred with the West Hamlin Elementary School. I had spoke to the principal first before I'd went any further, because I wasn't for sure what had it really went down, or how it got to the point it got. My child was let off of a school bus a quarter of a mile from her stop with a stranger that I still, to this day, would not know. She walked up and smacked me in the face. I mean, she, I assume had the other child that got off the same stop was her mu-- I mean, his mother, so I'm just assuming that's who she is. But my child and another child got into the car with her. Needless to say, where she could have taken them, or what could have happened to them. But also, the floodwater was there, so these children were turned out into floodwater, where no one knew if it was higher than what it was before school was in session, or if it had come up even more, if it even went down. And not to mention, there are several sex offenders that lived down that road. So I believe that he was in the wrong judgment to let the children off to someone he said he didn't really know. He just knew that he was the mother of the child. How I feel that he could treat my child as if she was a piece of paper thrown out the window, it is kind of harsh for me. But he has a child the same age as mine, so I'm not sure how his judgment was that day. I'm sorry, I'm going to get upset. I think the matter should have been dealt with sooner than to go through the system that we, how it's supposed to go through. I'm not sure if he has been disciplined, or I was told he was not on the bus for three days, so I'm not sure if that was his punishment, or I just don't think that was the correct amount of punishment, to be turning a first grader and a third grader off into, you know, God only knows what's out there, to kind of survive for themselves. Whether, he never said if he asked the lady if she would take them to their stop, or if he just assumed that she would go with, that the children would go with her, because he was, she, her child is a kindergartner. My question is, is how did she know to be at that direct bus stop at that time? Did the teacher call? Did the school call? Or how she knew, and we was not notified as well? But he said he also had 20 other students that lived past where Devon lives. Sorry, I'm not... And that day, that they were not on the bus, but I drive that road very frequently. I don't see how he could say there's 20 students still left on that bus, and he thought it was okay to let our two children off, because he was worried about the time that they would spend on the bus. Like, I guess, maybe an hour at the most for him to go around to the one-mile area? I just don't think that was right in his judgment. I think the children would have been safer on the school bus, whether they had nothing to drink, nothing to eat, a bathroom to go to, but at least I knew they were safe, because they were on the school bus. And I trust my children with every day, I mean, every day I send them to school trusting that, you know, you're going to take care of them, and then you just let them off the school bus to God only knows what. I'm sorry, I'm so upset.
That's okay.
I feel that her rights were very violated, and you guys talk about how you cannot speak about the person. Where's her rights in this situation? I mean, she has rights as well.
Ma'am, here's my suggestion. I would suggest that you make contact Mrs. Lucas, the superintendent. Privately, you all can discuss these issues.
I have.
Well, you said you weren't sure what punishment had been levied upon her.
Because she can't, she says she can't tell me. And I don't think that's fair.
Well, once again, that's what, at this time, we will request. Now, if you aren't satisfied, and by the next time we meet, if you will contact Mrs. Powell Wednesday, or the Powell there, if you will contact her Wednesday prior to a board meeting, and it has to be on the agenda, then you can come to the board meeting, we can go into Executive Session, and we can talk freely, if that's what you want, that agenda. Once again, you already feel that you've gone through all those letterals, and you've gotten whatever you can, but once again, my first suggestion would be, talk with Mrs. Lucas, and if you're still not satisfied, if this Powell, do you still feel the need to get on the agenda, then we can go into Executive Session and talk about it.
Okay, well, I've met with her twice, and have gotten nowhere, so I think it needs to be brought to the next level. And my personal opinion, I think the system's messed up the way that works. This happened almost a month ago, and I'm just now being able to talk to somebody about it almost a month later. I think that's very harsh, that I think something, when something's done, it needs to be dealt with then. It not, I mean, not needs to be put on the back burner and say, you know, you're allowed to speak at this meeting, or I'm not sure how the system really works. Like I said, this is my first time being here.
I'll just keep that general statement here, and not pertaining to your issue at all. We have to understand, in all likelihood, we don't, we aren't even aware of this. Because, once again, should, and I'm speaking generally, not about your issue here, but if an employee has an issue, they go through the different stages, and it could be something that could eventually come before the board. In other words, we may have to rule on that person some way to even, well, open ever, rarely, but somebody might be terminated, fired. Well, we can't know all of these things, because eventually, if we ever have a hearing, we can't be prejudiced by hearing one side.
Right.
So oftentimes, things like this happen that we aren't aware of yet. And that's why, you know, I'm just speaking in general terms. Once again, we always urge everybody to, you know, go through the chain of command, through the principal, the driver, all the way up to the board office here, the superintendent, and then come and meet with us if you still need that.
Okay. I have a question, though. I met with him and her the other night, and she said she has to, or someone has to give a recommendation of what can happen to him, or what can, if she is the one that's supposed to do that, why is it not brought to you guys yet? I don't...
Well, once again, I'm speaking in general terms, not about this issue, but that's what would happen if Mrs. Lucas made a recommendation. Ultimately, in the end, the board would have to approve that before it could happen. But that person, the employee that was involved, would have the opportunity to have a hearing before us before we acted upon it. So that's why sometimes these things get drawn up, they take longer than, you know, we think they should, is because there's a system that has to be, you know, Mrs. Lucas, first of all, has to investigate whatever it might be in any situation, and then she has to decide what she thinks, if there's any punishment that's necessary, that she feels is required. If she does, then she will notify that she will meet with, and then my letter notify that employee that she is considering making some disciplinary recommendation. At the same time, she will send board members a copy of her letter to that employee. So that's normally the first time we ever know about it, because, once again, we can't be prejudiced ahead of time and know about something. We, that gives that employee the right to say, okay, I'm, Mrs. Lucas would say, I'm recommending that this is, the board do this, whatever it might be. So, and I'm going to recommend that they do it on a certain date. Well, we'll get a copy of that. So then she will tell that employee that they have the opportunity to have a hearing before the board, before we act on it. So then, if the person wanted to, they could appear to the board, you'd have a hearing, and then after we heard both sides, you know, Mrs. Lucas' side and the employee's side, then the board could either ratify, go along with what Mrs. Lucas has requested that be done, the disciplinary action, or you could not do it. But that's the procedure that's always been done.
And I will have to, Jake, if I may. I did tell Mrs. Hager that she had the right to come here tonight, and tried to explain to her, you know, just what you had said, and if she wanted to be on the agenda, she needed to contact Mrs. Powell.
But that's really, at this point, I mean, I understand, you know, your concern, and we certainly understand it, all of us do, but, you know, at this point, you just, you just decide what your next step needs to be, if you want to speak to Mrs. Lucas again, if you feel that would help you any. If not, if you want to get, contact Mrs. Powell, her secretary, to get on the, on the agenda, just do it Wednesday prior to a board meeting, and then you'll be on there, and then you come to the board, and I'm sure the board will be willing to meet in Executive Session, and we can talk back and forth privately.
Okay. Why has it taken this long for someone to tell me that that is what I was able to do? I mean, like, I don't, I don't, I guess I understand how the system really works, because I thought, you know, going to the school principal first, then going over here to the bus, and Rod Cummings, I spoke with him, and the gentleman, the individual was in the same room, but all it, to me, was he was saying he was sorry. And I understand that, but sometimes, sorry's not going to fix it. So it needs to go to the next level, which was me going to Miss Lucas. I went to Miss Lucas, and I didn't get anything out of that. Like, of all I could, all she kept telling me was that you guys cannot speak about that individual, or his punishment, or what had happened, or... And I don't think that's right, because her, my child's rights was violated that day, so why does he get to have rights, and she doesn't?
Well, once again, speaking generally, we can't presume that someone's guilty. Maybe in this instance, the person was, but to go ahead and state publicly that this person did this, without them, once again, having the opportunity to show their side of the story, would not be fair for them. So that's why, sometimes I realize it could seem like it takes longer than it should, but, once again, you went through the proper steps from what you said here. Ultimately, you spoke to the superintendent, who has to make the recommendation to the board, but in doing that, you know, she has to investigate the circumstances, all this kind of thing. And then she has to make, in her mind, decide what punishment she thinks necessary, if any, and then meet with that employee, share that with that employee, notify them in writing at the same time as I said before, we would know at that time, give that employee the opportunity to have a hearing before the board, before we officially act on it. So it sounds to me like you've taken the correct steps, and, you know, maybe Mrs. Lucas has taken some action that is forthcoming, or has taken it, that we aren't aware of yet. That's why, once again, you know, I suggest you speak to her, because it's possible that she has. At this point, you know, we're just, we have to await the superintendent's recommendation. And, you know, we know about that, that it's going to be on an agenda, from what I said before, because she would tell that employee that they have the right to be heard by the board before we act.
Okay.
So both sides have to, you know, have to have the opportunity to speak.
But he had, I'm assuming going from the day that I met with Rod Cummings and him, that... He should have been able to do something then. Something should have been filed, or that day, some, somewhere it should have been documented that that had happened.
Who's to say that it wasn't?
But I can't get any of that information, because it's private.
Because it hasn't gone through all the process that it has to go through. But that, you know, when, I'm sure when you met with Mr. Cummings, the transportation director, he made note of that conference that he had with you. And I'm sure as you met with the superintendent, that she made note of that conference, or conferences with you. Now, because the decision had been made yet, doesn't mean that they haven't listened to you, made notes, tried to decide what might need to be done, and begun an investigation. I mean, we see all the time on TV every night about things that are going on all over the country, about things that happen, but oftentimes, there's not a decision made right then. We'll hear about a period of time, and then ultimately, somebody will come out and make a, you know, a prosecutor or something, or make a recommendation, and then they'll have a trial and all that. Our system is pretty much the same thing, it's on a smaller scale, but we still have to follow those same precedents of law.
I understand. But I asked her on Friday when we met, actually, it was Thursday when we met, that was the investigation going? She said it had been done. I asked her, did she personally go out and see where the children were dropped off at, to see the kind of conditions that they, whether either had to walk if that lady was not there? It was, it's not the prettiest of sights. And I called back Friday, when she told me that I could call back Friday, and I didn't get Ms. Powell, or I got another lady, I think her name was...
I think Ms. Powell was off that day.
Amy, but she didn't get the message till Monday.
Well, once again, I can't answer this question.
Oh, I know, I know, but I'm just...
Yeah, and I give frustration. Give the system a little time to work. I think you want to ask to be on the agenda next time. You're making that request now, right?
Yes. Can I do that now?
Like Mr. Baker said, at that time, then, in a private setting, we could talk, and then Mrs. Lucas may have some responses to some of the things you've asked.
Okay.
So that's May 19th, at six o'clock, right here.
Well, just to add, that there will be nothing released publicly...
Oh, I understand that.
...about this incident, or any disciplinary incident, hypothetical, until it's been fully investigated, gone through all the steps, we've acted on it, then you'll see something in the paper about who was disciplined, maybe, and what the discipline was. But that, and that's all you'll see publicly, so...
Okay, and if I was to call and see how it is, I cannot know how any of that's going, even with my child being involved?
Well, I think all you can be told is that there's an ongoing investigation.
Okay.
Because until all the facts are known, the superintendent can't make a decision as to what she might recommend to the board, and, once again, that, and the employee involved hasn't had the opportunity to give their version of it, and the board hasn't heard both sides of it to make their final decision, because the superintendent makes a recommendation, but it's a recommendation, it has to be ratified by the board.
Okay, she's, so she makes the recommendation of what to happen, and you guys judge on that, correct?
Correct. We, we decide whether we feel that that's appropriate, and if we do, then we vote in favor of her recommendation. But like Mr. Baker alluded to there, it's just due process, it just takes time, just like the court system, on a larger level, of course, but we have to follow those same levels of thing. Everybody, students have rights, employees have rights, everyone does, we have to abide those.
Okay.
But just because you're not getting information, doesn't mean you won't get information.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. That's the one person we had sign in, so I'd just go to the administrative section. Please, Tara, motion? Mr. Curry, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker?
Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus check rooms, or provide transportation for students to and from athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, who have provided proof of private vehicle liability insurance, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, county state trip for county gifted students to the Wilds, in Cumberland, Ohio, May 16th, 2015, transported by private coach, and expenses will be paid by one county commission grant.
Two items. Do you have discussion on this, too? Okay, if you have any questions, then, along with yes, but on administrative items. Yes. Finance that motion, please.
Amen.
Tara make the motion. Second that one, please. Tara, you're on the roll, second. And there's Birdie.
Okay, item A, scheduled invoices totaling $627,158.20 for our patch. Invoices are available from public inspection in the county office. That's all we have today.
We got that money to pay for that?
Yeah, we're okay.
Well, that's the board's thing. Okay. Does anybody have anything, Birdie? If not, then I'll call. But is that an all yes, but on finance? Okay, good personnel, motion, please. Mr. Curry, second by?
My second.
Girl seconds that.
Section A, this is for reclassification of service personnel. Just a small explanation, this is related to a new law that was passed a couple of years ago, and it has evolved into a final title for reclassification for kindergarten ages. And as you see, they will also not only be reclassified, but they will have a new pay grade, which will give them an increase due to the reclassification.
So I think everybody who don't, we talked about a little bit, she had some questions I had, so I found out, too, that there's a new classification now.
Yes, there is.
So we're all educated on that.
Section B, transfer of professional personnel. I would like for you to delete B2. Mrs. Martin withdrew her bid about four o'clock.
Said you were on the hard side?
Yes, you are. Section C, employment of extracurricular personnel. And then, section D is retirement and/or resignation, and you will note, see it noted under the effective date that they are by resignations. Any questions?
No questions. If not, then would that one be a lesion under B2? Would that be an all yes, but? Yes. Okay, we're down there, comments and concerns? First, have CTV decisions, now do they exist?
Since we met last week, I was able to draft a job description for a CTV administrator in a county high school, and I was going to be able to share it with you, so, give you an opportunity to provide some feedback, maybe answer a question or two that I have regarding the position. How are we talking about?
Yes, we're talking about.
This job description is very similar to the ones that I've looked at to be given to me from the other counties out there, which I mentioned to you last week, I've spoken to, regarding not only what the responsibilities and duties would be in the position, but also what the title, you know, of the position itself would be. You'll notice there at the top that I have CTE supervisor slash coordinator, you know, question mark out there. I've got with Birdie, was it last, I'd say last week? And we looked in the salary schedule, we don't really have anything in there for supervisor, but we do have coordinator already in our salary schedule. So we looked at the possibility that maybe this would be a coordinator position, which includes a $15 a day supplement, to be, you know, daily rate, depending on how many years of experience and our degree that we have. So we roughed that in, just to give you some idea of what that potentially would cost for that position. And someone with approximately 20 years of experience in a master's degree, salary and benefits, you're looking at approximately $73,000.
With how much experience?
That's someone with 20 years of experience in a master's degree, some sort of, you know, administrator. So Mrs. Lucas and I, we talked last week, too, about who this person would report to, who would this person be responsible to. And through that conversation, we both feel like that this person would report, should report, to the principal, to the building principal, because of the responsibilities that would overlap, when it comes to working with those children, and in fact, the other administrators, would be the ones that would be dealing with any kind of discipline or matters that would come into play. But I left that blank, because I wanted your feedback, what, you know, whether or not that's kind of what you envisioned, I mean, or whether you would see this person maybe reporting to someone here at the central office, such as myself.
I got a little head start, because I had to be over there the other day, and Jeff handed me a copy of it. So I've seen, I've already had a chance to make remarks on that.
Okay, good.
That was a lot of notes. Well, I was here, and he said, hey, take this with you.
I did, yeah.
He had to staple it together. But I had to just complain, first of all, on the title, I personally agree with you that the person should report to the principal myself, I don't know about everybody else, how you all feel about it, but being under the roof of the high school, it just seems to me like the principal should be the actual person. But as far as the title, I keep getting hung up on this, because... because I know, and I look through our salary schedule, and the salary schedule, we do, we have a coordinator. I thought we even had a supervisor.
It's on the service side.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
I was thinking.
There's one regard on the service.
That those people are county, you know, the way I see that is it looked to me like those were county coordinators. So if we're going to have this person responsible to a principal, it almost appeared to me that it almost had to be a different classification of a school coordinator, if that was the title. Because the others are under the county supervision. That's just something to be considered. If we, whatever we call the person, we have to have a different classification or if they're all under the same, if they were a county employee.
Well, I could, just for clarification, do you have, you know, I have that one list that's pretty much just the county people, and then I kind of have the other list that's school people. So I could add it over to the school, you know, where principal supplements and the band directors and...
Right. Well, all I'm saying is if, what would you say, $15 a day was the...
That's what...
Okay, so if I'm a county coordinator, we don't have that, I don't think.
We don't.
If I'm a county coordinator, I'd get $15 more a day. Well, the question is, if I'm a school coordinator, should I get $15 a day or something different? I don't know the answer to that. But I'm just saying, it just seems to me like if we're going to, if it's a consensus among the board here that this person will report to the principal, then it seems to me like we almost ought to have a different salary schedule, classification that would be under a school level and not the county level. And then it may be that they get $15 still, I don't know. Or it might be something different. It's just the title.
But we can create a...
I agree.
You agree?
How'd you get that shot?
I know in the one county that had a...
Chris has the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking to Birdie.
I just, I have, I agree. I think we need to have a separate list of whatever this is, what the title is.
So this would be its own unique job type. So whether we call, you know, maybe we call it a CTE supervisor.
And then what, Chris, and I think regardless what we call it, it should fall under a school level salary schedule.
And that's very easy to accommodate.
So we just create a new, revise the salary schedule to have a school level, whatever we want to call it.
And then you would approve that new salary schedule and...
Yes, that's what I think.
That's good, yeah.
I like Mr. Chris. I think that he should be on the principal jury protection. He'll be the one that's evaluating many.
That's what I always...
What you all think, yeah? That's getting scary.
I know, I know.
As long as the evaluation seems to it that he is.
Now, that's, that's my concern, is the current person with CTE responsibility evaluated by the principal?
Yes.
Yes.
And how's that been working out?
Well, we don't know.
We don't know.
It hasn't.
Well, it just muddies the water. I mean, if it was someone who worked in that building and would report to me or Mrs. Lucas, then that relationship with the principal, you know, was just, I'm just not sure that would be effective.
That's the important concern, thinking that if I'm under the same, in the same building with somebody, but I'm not really their boss, if they have a faculty meeting, is the person at hand or they go their own way to move here? Well, this person, if we create this position, this person's going to have to be dynamic. They're going to have to be a self-starter. They're going to have to basically revamp everything on their own with very little oversight. So it follows to us to make sure we pick the right person to do this job so that the principal doesn't have to make them do the job we hired them to do. So the principal doesn't have time to do that now. So if we're creating a new position, we need to make sure we get the right person from that position.
I agree wholeheartedly. But I also think that the principal still has responsibility to evaluate everybody out there, including somebody hopefully that we get that will be doing a great job and tell them what a great job they're doing.
Okay, Jeff, so does anybody have a preference as far as what they'd be called?
So we may, we may just call it a CTE supervisor. Maybe that'll be its title.
Everybody live in that?
And we can argue with Birdie and we can come up with...
Okay, CTE supervisor. Now, does anybody have any thoughts about their salary date? Their, basically their salary's going to be already established, except for the extra that they get per day, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you know, Jeff was mentioning his figure, the testament was based on $15 a day county supplement. Do we have anything to compare that to any other people in our system? Because all your county people make something other than that, don't they? That work in the board office.
The county directors make $40.
$40, okay.
Are they the only...
Of course, you know, here's the bad situation.
It's got to be bad.
Well, executive secretary supplement is more than the coordinator's supplement. So if we're going to hire someone...
This $15 a day?
So then we're going to hire somebody to be...
Let's cut there.
You don't, you don't want, you know, to, you know, count... Hire somebody to be an administrator, and their supplement's going to be less than the executive secretary supplement.
Sorry, you read me, we cut the executive.
I am not going to open that. I'm not opening. Do not quote me, John. But yes.
What does, what does the executive secretary?
It's $30 a day.
Yeah, really what needs to happen is...
I want to be a secretary.
I mean, really, at some point, what we should do is that coordinators should be paid more than an executive secretary, but it's just never been correct.
But that base pay will, I mean, the base pay be a lot more than the secretary's.
Yeah, because of their profession.
Because the salary wouldn't be anyway.
No, 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 they're two different, service, professional. But the supplements, you know, the whole county supplements. So the secretaries would get a more of a county supplement than a CTE supervisor.
But once again, they work on a county basis, the salary schedule. This person will work at the school level. I don't know how much they would say to pay. Okay, Jeff had recommended $15. I don't know where you got that from. Did you and Birdie kind of come up with that?
We did.
Other counties or something? Does everybody feel that's okay this time? I mean, we're not adopting dog scripts tonight. We're just kind of giving... I guess he's going to make a rough draft, and then, then we'll come back.
I was going to say, I had words with this, not about to give you my...
Oh, that's okay. That's why we're doing this.
Yes, because I have some changes.
Because I'll bring this back on the 19th when you look at it again.
Remedy.
Oh, okay.
Grammer and wording.
All right. Well, because this is, you know, you'll eventually ask the board to approve the salary or the job description and also revision of the salary schedule.
That's right, yes.
So in the meantime, everybody be thinking about what that should be.
Under the qualifications piece, is there any questions about?
Yes.
Do this book...
The first one says valid wish to the administrative for grades of grade 7-12. Board elders work for such preferred. Wouldn't that be required? I don't understand why that would be preferred. It seems to me like y'all even would have to have that.
That was one of the chapters I...
Man, that's two chapters.
You two are just... You want to change it later.
We're on our own.
All right, I'll take that.
You understand, Ms. McGee?
Got it.
The president and the superintendent, they're going to be... We'd agree. But Jeff, does that make sense, Jeff?
It does.
Is that what I'm saying? Okay, so that should be a requirement, right? Let's see now. He's thinking, yes, you got it.
I don't have, I don't have my changed form.
Okay, let's go down to number three. Possess administrative evaluation certification. That... Is that an automatic thing? I know you have to have that now. Is that...
You can't have a valid wish for junior administrative certificate without this, without number three.
So if you've cut number two, you automatically have three? I guess that's my question. So we could scratch three, is that what you're saying, three? That's kind of, I believe that's what I was thinking too. Valid wish to the administrators for grades of decay and adult. So in order to have that, you would have number three, okay? All right, let's see. Is there a vocational administrative certification?
There was years ago, Russ.
I know there used to be.
But not now.
Okay.
Senior leadership studies or whatever.
Do we... Vocational, I got my big talk of that. There should, there be a criteria, qualification criteria about vocational background, prefer, knowledge in vocational education, or we can include that. I mean, I'm not, I'm asking.
I would hope so. I would hope we would see to that when we do our interviews.
They can prefer.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it was just prefer, not required, then that way everyone would have the opportunity to apply, but maybe that might put somebody over the edge if they had, you know, some experience in that level. So, yeah, I was thinking of it being preferred too. Personal qualities, probably want somebody that's all those things you said a while ago, go get her and everything. I'm sure that if the board, any board member had any other, because they haven't had the opportunity to see this, Jeff, if they can share that with you, they can email you or call you or something to tell you, right?
I'd be shocked.
I guess the board, because they haven't had the opportunity, like we have to look at it. But if anybody has anything on personal qualities or duties, responsibilities, and you have comments about those, Jeff, you can share those.
Well, as a duty and responsibilities, I'm not opposed directly from the job description that I've been given from Frankston and Ohio Springs. They were verbatim.
Use the same ones. Okay, on the other duties responsibilities. On number one, I know you probably barred someone, the personnel director. Since we don't have one, we say the personnel department is. And then, don't we always have this one cut off? Number 13, ever think of?
Other duties as a sign?
Now, as a sign of the who now?
As the, from the building principal.
Okay.
I left that out because I know that we talked about this person wouldn't have any responsibility for taking care of discipline. We didn't want him to be tied down in discipline. So, I mean, that's, this piece, you know, we just have to have a conversation with the building principal, what that means.
We kind of did a little.
A little.
Well, then things could evolve over time to where we, you know, in the days, the board might feel appropriate, the superintendent's playing that, something else needs to be added. It's not one of these things listed. We have a way, you know, for that to be done. I know every job description I've ever seen has that number. Oh, other duties. Okay, evaluation courses that you already have building principals. So you kind of answered our question on the other one, falls into the school principal being the supervisor. Now, the term of employment, the 210 days. Now, there are conferences that go on in the summer?
Yes.
Do we have any knowledge of how long they are, how many days they pay, or anything?
Usually a couple of weeks.
Like ten days? Now, Mrs. Lucas told me the other day that it was possible to offer someone's contractual days, like, I picked in December, that, well, you don't have to work so many days and you've been working in July.
That's right. Anyone that's over 200-day employee can have a flexible schedule.
Because I know Carol may do, thought last one time we were meeting, that we should, a person should be able to be there a little bit before the other people come and after they leave, which, I don't know how many days, but a couple of days on each end, maybe. And if they were able to do that, but these conferences seem to be pretty important, I would think. They are, because we want them to go out and bring back all this knowledge from around the state. But is that, would that work with 210 days, we're using a flexible schedule that the principal could, you know, I mean, I guess with simple, we might decide how many we want to work before and after, because everyone has to do that, don't they? Birdie, turn in your monthly schedule.
Yes, we can always add days like we do.
Well, that's true too. We can take it on up to...
We did with our...
We can add to. But so we have a couple of options there. 210 seems reasonable, but like, you know, so we could add to it, or maybe between the president and this individual, they could get together and work out some changes throughout the school year. So maybe they might want to be off in the sort of time for Christmas or something, in that timeframe, and if it's not a real active time, they have a principal say, well, you can take off that and work for the summer. We'll leave that out if you want. Okay, anything else? Does anybody have anything this time, anything else you have? Yeah, Birdie, anything else that you should need to note from your perspective? Once again, everybody, if you just, if you have a chance to look at those, since you have any more thoughts you have on it. We will wait a final approval of each of those things, the schedule and the job description.
I'll come back to you on the 19th with revised job description for, you know, for you to look at, and then maybe the subsequent board meeting, the next one, maybe it'll be on there for approval. I want to make sure I have input from everyone.
Well, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other things, if you have something else to raise?
Well, just wanted to let you all know that Damon had made the request for the road to be closed at the Duval site. He's already been, had a conversation with the...
DOH.
To follow up on, about $80 for the filter. He has sent in the information. We're just waiting on a response, but... One other item that we wanted to know. The Hartz five team had requested and you all had approved a professional development trip for the, on the last two days of...
June 17 and 18.
18. But that was before the 17th and 19th became instructional days. This was paid for through Title I months.
Title I months.
And this is an issue that I wanted you all to be aware of because it does entail the majority of the faculty going. They've already made their reservations. They've already sent the deposits.
Registration fees, all that's been...
That was all it, because at the time you all approved it, we had only missed...
Three days.
Three days. And we thought, you know, we had plenty of room. But of course, that didn't turn out the way we thought. So Mrs. Douglas has stated that she does have, or she did have a plan when there was one day. But we've talked about getting enough people scheduled to go, to be at the school that day, or as many as we can in order to attend you construction for those two days. There's no guarantee, but we will, that we can get every physician filled for those two days that we're working on there.
And did you say the majority of the faculty were scheduled to go all?
Majority.
Twenty-three. That includes teachers, administrators, counselors.
How... How, how many, twenty-three out of twenty-four?
Oh, no, I don't know.
There's thirty-five to forty on staff. It's not all, it's not everything.
It's not everything.
Yes. I was going to say, because otherwise, like, the central office is going to go.
Yeah. We've already talked, we've already talked about that.
Yeah, we.
Who will be there and who will, uh, in the steps, but you know, there are some, some of the, the staff, uh, two of them being, you know, the administrators, said counselor, some of whom are the title teachers that, uh, would be substitute need for, you know, there are some of them that we would not, but, um, we were, uh, counting those members as being going to try to go ahead and get, um, things scheduled to the best that we could possibly schedule.
Oh, were those days true?
Seventeenth and nineteenth of June.
What, uh, will State Department say if one school in the county doesn't have a hundred and eighty days?
Well, they'll, they'll have it, they'll have a hundred and eighty days. We just wanted you all to know.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, we all know, that's usually what's to happen.
Well, Fred. I don't know what they will say. I truthfully, I do not know what they will say, um, but, you know, in, in our defense, you know, we, at that time that we submitted and offered.
I'm not questioning that. I'm not questioning paying twenty-three substitutes. We've fabricated it. I mean, we all know that's what it is. Might as well.
Well, I.
I, I.
Probably won't be home on kids there.
You're assuming the kids are.
Probably won't be home on kids there.
No, there won't be kids there either.
Because.
In the last days I have been.
Right, so I think it's, my opinion is here is what, so waste that money, but I, I wonder what State Department say.
Well, I think if you have an instruct, based on the circumstances, you've got an instructional plan in place, that's about all we can do then.
I just wanted you all to know before we started getting stuff.
Realistically though, can they have a, uh, a day and a half instruction in the gym with existing staff?
I think with, with the number of students possibly that will be there, uh, you know, let's take a first grade or, uh, like the preschool, preschool students will not be there anyway, okay? So we will have a preschool teacher that will be able to fill in, you know, in another spot that's not going. You know, we've looked at, at all of the different teachers that are going, um, I'll say a third grade, and I don't, that's just pulling that out of my hat. If there are two third grade teachers, I think one is not going. Well, the third grade students, there will probably be enough third grade students for one class. I doubt that all the third grade students would show up. I don't know. But I just didn't want you all to hear about it.
How many principal circles?
They were both, uh, the principal, the system principal, both.
Were at every school?
No, just at that school, only, just at that school, that's the only school that.
And there could be some common, uh, instructional activity where a, a large group is together doing something, like, uh, kind of, around, it could not be in the gym or somewhere where some type of activities could take place with large groups.
Plus, you know, if you think, you know, you could have community speakers, I mean, there, there are multiple things that can happen, you know, and, and we're working, you know, toward getting as much instruction, uh, as we possibly can during those two days, you know. But I wanted you all to know that we are working on a plan, um, to provide, uh, you know, instruction for the students. But that just, that just happened. And we did check on trying to get, you know, trying to cancel it, and the amount of money that we would lose was astronomical.
Just nearly twenty-five thousand dollars.
We didn't want to lose, you know.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I've got a quick, I saw on Trump paper yesterday what the State Department made a parent funding for, for, we.
Last year, but Jeff, you wanted to address that?
Sure, I, we, we weren't impacted by that mistake that was made last year. It's my understanding it was two counties and all of ours being won. Now, the, the year before, a similar mistake was made, and we were impacted. We didn't find out until February that the mistake had been made, you know, and, well, actually it was a bit later than that. And we were already through the personnel case, but we were able to use some carryover money to, to cover the error that was made. But we, uh, we've always questioned, it's called a five seventeen report, for, for needy students, there's a number of students at each school that eligible for free, there's lunch. And we, we, since that happened two years ago, we always question the State Department to make sure our numbers are accurate. We don't want to be in that position.
In other words, they didn't learn from the first mistake.
But, but I do have to say this, Fred and any of the others, we, when we start looking at during personnel season, we always are very cautious, and we have said, and I know you all heard, it's easier to put a person back than to try to absorb it at the end, so we many times reduce those teachers and then our, once the funding and the final dollars comes through, then we're able to put those people back. It's not true, you know, people don't totally understand that, but we err on the side of caution. And, um, so, you know, I don't think we can take a million dollar hit.
I agree. One, one six million dollars was the mistake in the county, our Title I funds is one point three million. So, you know, we, we're devastated.
Commit you did. Okay. Anybody have anything else? I just, okay, um, let's talk about middle school soccer for just briefly here. From the figures we saw the last time, it looked like there was, seemingly hadn't the numbers to justify teams, three in the school, but Harts or didn't seem to be enough. Is that kind of a consensus? But would the students at Harts that wanted to participate, could they play on another team at Guy in Valley or somewhere else if they associate?
SSAC will allow you to do that one time. If you don't have enough players, or if you don't have a coach, they give you one year. So it would be permissible for the first season for those students to come to Guy Valley, Kissimmee. But after that year, we'd have to, we'd have to find a coach or, and get enough kids to play.
Well, so I mean, there, that would be a, a possibility for those students.
One question, how many students at Harts were interested?
I think it was eleven.
Nine, nine, I had nine in my head, nine or eleven, yeah.
Voice, is that voice answer?
Hold on.
Come on, so that's not, wouldn't be enough, even if you came by this.
Well, I was thinking, I was going to throw it to Phil, but I think that's what I was thinking, I don't have to, I think there's only five, four. I can go down. Oh, that's okay, that's okay.
But can you find the standard cut?
You can, yeah.
Of course, that system was a five rule.
Well, I've just seen if they had an option for those that were really, I mean, I'm not all convinced that everybody signs up for something that's really going to do it. It sounds good that day, but then when it draws near, they might not. But the one, there probably among that group are those that would, that would like to participate. So just, I wanted to just see if they had an option, uh, either be a coed team like Fred mentioned, or maybe go to another school. So, and if that, if that did occur, they could do it for one year, then maybe more interest would come out of there, out of Harts. Or if not, then we just wouldn't be able to offer it to the right.
Right.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention, um, is just, maybe do it at the end, but I'll do it now, is that, uh, we should have a special meeting scheduled for, uh, May the twelfth, for, uh, conducting the superintendent interviews. That meeting will begin at two o'clock, so we can, as, got this pound, uh, put that notice out for us. Now, you might have anything else before we can go to our hearing?
Do we need to do anything else with the soccer as a bright meal? Do we need to?
Well, we, at some point, yeah, at some point, we're going to have to, um, approve, um, I guess having, uh, the teams and approve, uh, the advertisement of the coaches. Now.
We probably should do that. Pretty soon.
And I think it.
I have a day on for the coordinate.
Okay, now, are we, on that, are we sure now, are we, I guess we're dealing with three schools, and are we saying that we're going to have boys and girls at all three?
I think we had enough to do that.
I don't have my.
We'll have to prove the post, and then having to get enough coaches, that would be another issue.
Is there any, there's, but there's no minimum on the number of kids that have to sign up?
Do we have a salary schedule, uh, middle school soccer would have to do that as well?
So maybe when we do that other week, do that. Okay, so we'll have to approve a, a salary schedule for middle school soccer coaches, both boys and girls coaches. And then, I guess, uh, just approve the establishment of the programs at the middle school. Freddie, you say that's on the nineteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Which one? Okay. Okay, like I say, uh, anything else, was somebody else?
I don't know. Uh, when Mr. Farley, you all remember, came to the board, um, a few weeks ago, requesting some, um, money, uh, for, uh, the use of the facility, well, he has, uh, sent us a dollar amount.
Thank you, Mr. Farley, what?
So we have received, um, their, uh, dollar amount from their board, and I have given that to, um, our attorney, Leslie Tyree. She's going to draft something, uh, and I'll be bringing that to the board, and you all can, uh, take, you know, vote on it, whether, whatever amount that you want, and send it, an amount that they would like to.
For the use of what?
The, uh, the gym and the community center and their locker rooms.
This is the former high school?
Yes.
They, he approached the board about, uh, the board helping pay with a few other issues. But superintendent advises that we're not allowed to do that, we could enter to an agreement that rental, a part of the building like we do with the lines, but the other things like that. Okay. All these things are following advice in the year. All right, if there's nothing further, then, uh, we'll go down to the student disciplinary hearing, and, uh, being a student disciplinary here, not. We could have a, uh, a motion to that effect, please, at seven oh three P M. Mr. Baker makes the motion, seven oh three P M. Smith seconded. Is that an all yes to go into executive session for a student disciplinary matter?